Didn't at my house.
Getting a little bit of benefit, water benefit since they haven't experienced rain in a couple of years as of November.
So, welcome back commissioners and back to you Chair Harrington.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Hope you had a good lunch. I am now powered by cappuccino corner cookie. So we've got two topics for this afternoon. The first one, strategic planning. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Angie and her ACA Rachel Fuller.
Good afternoon. Chair Harrington and Commissioners, Rachel Fuller, Assistant Attorney Administrator. Really pleased to be with you this afternoon. The purpose of today's conversation is to review where we've been with the strategic plan project, to share information that we've received and to discuss options should the board decide to move forward with the project. And at the end of the brief presentation, I will be looking for your direction. The purpose of a strategic plan is to define the long-term goals and priorities for the community and the organization. We've discussed in previous presentations that it's been many years since the county adopted a strategic plan for the organization. As demonstrated on this graphic, strategic planning requires prioritization. And through this process, the board would be establishing a practice of engaging the community to identify needs, balancing all of those needs, setting goals and developing strategies and actions to address the needs over time. The organization is then aligned around these goals, strategies and service levels in service to the community. The board has worked for the 18 months despite many disruptions at a high level to gather a common understanding of strategic planning, to ground invest and emerging practices. And the options presented today are a result of that work. So what we've heard is really kind of falls into these four categories. Principles, outcomes, engagement outcomes and engagement process. And I'm not going to go through all of them. They are included in your packet. And this input hasn't been adopted by the board and is just simply provided for your information catalog. What we've heard so far, these, this information would be refined as we move through the project, but we thought it would be helpful to put everything into one place. So now moving into options, we can talk a little bit about options for moving forward with the project. Option one, and I want to reference the, the IAP two spectrum that we talked about today. We would engage a consultant and this is the most comprehensive on that spectrum. We would engage a consultant through an RFP process, engage ACRE to co-develop the RFP and engage them in the selection process. The project would then engage the board stakeholders and the community to develop a strategic plan. This option is the most comprehensive, includes the broadest community engagement and is also the most resource and time intensive. Included in your packet is just a scope of magnitude estimate of $250,000 for consultant support. You might note that strategic planning is an ARPA eligible expense. This project could be initiated in the first half of 2023 with consultant with development of the RFP and eventually consultant selection. And then, as we've talked about before, we would expect the entire project to take approximately 18 months. And depending on when we start could be completed by the end of 2024. Option two is a shorter term project where the board would work with a facilitator consultant to develop an initial set of goals. We could all, would also develop strategies and actions. This would provide clarity for the organization, prioritization, goals for the organization and the community, but certainly would not have the benefit of the robust, a two-way community engagement that is anticipated under option number one. Again, in your packet, the, the estimated cost for this project would be approximately $20,000 in consultant and facilitator support. This project could be initiated relatively quickly. And with initial goal strategies developed within, within a couple of months to six months, depending on the pace. And then option three is on this graphic in outlined on the graphic here. It's a combination of options one and two. With this option, we would begin development of the initial plan, which is option two through the facilitated process. And then also begin the initiation of that broader project with a development of the, of the RFP with ACRE consultant selection and then robust and extensive community engagement. The cost for this would be the combined cost for, for options one and two. And so with that, we are recommending, staff is recommending that the board direct staff to pursue option three. This is the combined option that provides a short term, it's a short-term project, a short-term direction for the organization combined with comprehensive community outreach. And so again, we are looking for direction, a decision to move forward with one of those options. And that's the extent of my presentation. Tanya and I are available for any questions.
Could I pick off our discussion? So I appreciate the information that is in the memo. I'm, I have two things I would like to just start off with. And they, the two actually relate to the same thing. The description of option two, I see a little bit differently. Everything you've said here is correct and I am on board with. But I think there's a little bit more clarity that I would like to suggest. Option two, develop an initial set of goals, strategies and action. This option could provide da, 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 da. I understand and agree with all of that. It would not have the benefit of a robust program-specific community engagement. And let me pause there or put a note there. To me, what option two does is it leverages the board's knowledge and expertise. Right? We've been through our service, taking in information. We have thoughts. Some of us have had a longer tenure than others, right? And Roy had the opportunity, Commissioner Rogers, excuse me.
I like her better.
Had the opportunity of participating in the county-specific strategic plan previously that I know I did not. And did not, I wasn't even a resident. So that's why I su- I'm suggesting that that be added to the, or something along those lines to option two. Because you're, it's building upon our expertise. We've all run to accept the responsibility, right? Of our public service and our direction setting. But you're correct in calling out it, this option does not involve that program-specific, i.e. that community strategic plan, specific aspiration on community engagement. I'm totally there with you. The other thing that in that description is put so succinctly that I'm concerned that our community doesn't have the same value of understanding, potential understanding that we have is the value of providing the clarity and prioritization in a faster timeframe. Okay? And I know you know this, but I won't, I feel it's important to bring voice to the fact that we, we, the board and all of our staff are really challenged to deliver valued services now while at the same time of doing so with government always has constrained resources. It's just the nature of the beast, right? Cause who wants to pay more tax, right? Who wants more regulation? Sorry. But there's a reason why we have regulation, right? There's a reason why government does need to make investments and it's a challenging time. Yes, it's always a challenging time to, but we find ourselves in 21st century challenging times that we have some urgent needs. And that's where the urgency of option two has value, I think. And then I, I really appreciate how you have laid out that option three is the combination. But here's where I struggle a little bit, both with the, with the tremendous level of, it's nice that you've been so clear and concise, but at the same time, I want to ensure that all of our community members, including all of our, our new media reporters who've not necessarily had the benefit of understanding public finance, of understanding public government strategic planning, right? That where a little bit more explanation may help us in the longer term. Okay? So for option three, I'm struggling a little bit with the communicating in this little paragraph, the value of that combined approach. It will help us in the shorter term for the next couple, three years. While at the same time, having that robust program, that comp, that robust community engagement and the comprehensive program that we are aspiring to so that the strategic plan can endure not only for five to 10 years, but also that it can go through the nature of the iterative process that we've had the benefit of learning about through the GFOA, for example, exposure that we've had. So and so that second thing was all that being said about option two and option three in terms of the conciseness of, of explanations. This is where I struggled a tiny bit with the graphic. Develop the initial plan and initiate a rolling plan. I, I, and I'm looking at the graphic right there. So the, the part that's, I, I think in a way, if I had a whiteboard, I need another little arrow that has the dot, dot, dot of, well, I guess you do the strategic planning process. You do have that in the big triangle. What I am struggling with is I guess, this is, sorry, I'm thinking out loud. I'm supposed to see that the outcome of that will fold into that. Never mind. The second one's already addressed. I just needed to catch up with the value of it. Sorry to be so long-winded.
Appreciate that input.
I think I understand.
There may be a better way to, to show that, but I appreciate that, that input.
Well, the, the, the part that I think I was struggling with in looking at the graphic, perhaps I should have invested a little bit more time is that it all comes together with that strategic thing and continues. And in my initial read, I just didn't get that the way I now do. Okay. So I think I understand the options and the graphic, the base level information. How, how about you colleagues? Any questions? And then what kind of discussion, comments and, and direction do we want to consider? I butted in the beginning of the line because I didn't get the base information. Now I'm there.
I, the only question I had, you thought about, you understand the process. There's nothing really to add there, but the hydraulics of all of this is that we have some budgetary issues. We understand that 25 billion. That's on the operational side. If we throw things in, I still predict it's 50, 60 million. But we, we got, we've got some issues that we're trying to deal with internally. While you're doing this long look, and I think you're taking exactly the right approach. So I'm in favor of what you're doing. But I, I don't know how they intersect because your number two up there was not up there anymore. But the number two was a fairly quick process by the board. It, it, it seems like we're going to need to make some pretty quick decisions. Not for the long term, but at least a bridge kind of a time, you know, kind of like bridge financing on a project. We need something to get us there. So I, I, I'm not really understanding how that might work. Do five people plus all of you sit down and say, here's what we have to do, you know, for the next 16 months? And then we jump at it or?
Yeah.
Help me understand that.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. And I think you're right. We're doing a lot of things at once and eventually all, all everything merges together, right? River runs through it, I guess. Um, so eventually, eventually they all, all merge together. I think this goes to what the chair was speaking to about the urgency of, of prioritization, some of which we will do through the budget process, some of which we will do through this process. And then eventually it will all come together, but it is that prioritization that is, that is really urgent at this time.
If I may just expand, go ahead. Hearing what you said, Commissioner, in an, develop initial plan and that sense of urgency, I am internalizing more the role of board approving. It isn't just providing direction. We're approving the goals. We're approving the initial strategy. So it's much like we're looking at the current strategic plan elements and our current direction. And we're affirming that through approval, right? And at the same time, yeah, at, at this, and there is an urgency around that. There are some good bases for us to continue to build on. At the same time that the RFP is being developed, I'm not sure if the board has to weigh in on that RFP, by the way, or if there's an approval step in there. I don't know. But I, that approval does help us both with current, well, actually it's a question, current budget, direction and problem solving that needs to happen before the end of June and then longer term.
Yeah. So I think I'm on the same page as you.
Yeah, I'm going to just build on that because I, that's what I was going to say. And we really, to get us to June, that's really short-term. A full strategic plan will not, I don't feel with full community engagement be adopted by the next fiscal year prep. So the purpose of this initial plan is not just for this year. It's starting to tee us up for the following year that will, yes, then connect to the larger strategic plan with robust community engagement. Having clear goals and priorities, action steps for the organizer is something that would be incredibly helpful to me. And also I know our departments as we start to think about next year's budget.
Can I put that back in my mind even though you have on the graphs and stuff? Sometime in the next four months, I don't give a six because that's, you're going to have to do a lot before that. In the next four months, you're going to have this board assist you collectively. And either reaffirming some things that we're going to do, but do something really short-term so we can get through 2022, boy, that sounds like a long time, 23, 24 budget, I guess, somewhere in there. If you're going to do that. Am I understanding that correctly? That, that's, that's the overlay that's going to happen.
So actually the, the action you took earlier this morning in terms of board principles and organizational priorities, listening to those was very helpful for the this year's budget process. What this, this will be helpful in either affirming that or helping us plan even for next year's budget. And as we move through our operations, and then we are also working on this long-term strategic plan. So I just want to acknowledge there is a timing issue. It is hard to sync all of these up. So we acknowledge that at this point, it's, it's just getting started.
And then I have one other thing real quickly in that when we originally designed it, it was, as you know, you and I talked on the phone, it was designed that everybody gets the same base level and you know, we could all buy it. So that's how the original plan. Then in Tom Bryant's day, when he was chair, he tried to figure out how to have the idea and concept of cities taking in some of these incorporate occur faster. He could never get there. And the reason he couldn't, there wasn't really any way that he could measure costs. Now clean water services, you probably are aware, going through a coffee service study right now. And their idea is what's these basins costing? And so what, how should we determine those costs? Does this plan anyway envision long-term? I know nothing's going to happen past, but envision some sort of cost of service so that, and I don't pick a very specific example, which may not be fair. Or, but it is there. Or the chair saying, I will, I will provide police services at this cost. Are we fully costing the services or before we say, we will do planning in this area and this is what our permit costs are without knowing what it really costs to service that area? Are we going to continue to have long-range plans without really knowing costs? Does that make sense for?
It does make sense. I think we're actually at a step ahead of that, which is understanding from the board's perspective, what the goals are and what the priorities are. And so if, for example, moving, moving, if cities are the best provider of municipal services, if, if that's a goal, then there could be strategies that we would work on, that staff would work on to bring information to the board about how to operationalize that strategy.
I would take a slightly different approach. What, and I think you and I have talked about this, or I, I, to put it differently, I've tried to be a voice for this. I appreciate all those prior efforts and there have been multiples. What to me, it has been very clear since the three of us joined in 2019, but even clearer with la- last year's budget, our current fiscal year budget and going into the development of the proposed is that we can no longer use countywide resources for municipal services. Because we have so many unfunded mandates and additional community needs, example, mental health and behavioral health that needs and homelessness that need additional discretionary resources. As well as our own employee costs and workforce development needs. Right? Workforce development for Washington County employees and costs has changed since the late 1990s into the early 2000s. And we recognize that now. Which is why, even if we wanted to provide, you know, in spirit, wanted to provide municipal services, the reality is we still can't afford it. So I know I'm being the negative messenger on this.
No, you're, you're, you're peeing right on it. I, I just, then again, I may be not expressing it right, but they, I'm trying to understand if there's ever going to be part of that plan, some analysis of costs because I, and we can say go in a direction, but if we don't know what the costs are to do that, it is, it's hard.
But that, but to me, that's a little bit of a false choice. Okay. Because that's saying, well, the, the multi-part menu is still on the table. And what we know is the reality now is we can't fund part of that menu at all.
You're a step ahead of me and I don't disagree with where we're at.
I'm with you now.
You're ahead of me. I've kind of come back and said, but here's why we can't do that.
Okay, okay. All right.
You're both ahead of the process though.
Those can both be part of the process. The internal work that we are starting right now that will get to, I think where the two of you are going. We need to just understand what are our services and what are our service levels within the county across all Washington County then?
So I'm, I get, I, I don't disagree with that. Okay? But I'm a little confused. We have had the facts presented to us that we have a $25 million gap in operationalizing our current budget and service needs informing towards putting together a new proposed budget. And part of that is these, these, there are lean municipal services, right? ESPD, URMD, that where there are, where there is a hun, huh, 100% coverage, I'm with you, but there's a whole bunch of it that isn't 100% coverage that is getting general fund. And I thought, and now I'm still relying upon the fact that we all agree on those facts.
We do. I, oh, what I, what I'm just saying that where you are is in solving the problem. And I think this, where Rachel is in the presentation of where, what the strategic plan is going to do. You're, you're ahead of where.
Thank you, thank you.
That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying I don't disagree with this iteration.
And, and I think to Ms. Angie's point, we could add another line on the graphic that is the service level assessment that's occurring at the same time that will provide the okay, provide additional information so that we can make decisions down the road.
Got it. So I don't think we've yet decided on the three options.
Right.
You're correct.
No. And I have a question about the three options. May, is this?
That's perfect. Yeah.
So I think I understand and please correct me if I'm wrong, that, that, that the op, option one is it's labor intensive for staff as well as bringing a consultant on. Is that, is that correct? I, I'm trying to understand why option two is the preferred option. And I just need to understand quickly.
Option three.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Option three, which is the combination of option one and two, correct?
Yeah. Oh, yes, 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 yes. Okay. Yeah.
I'm here. And what I don't, what I'm trying to understand is if option one, is it a cost piece? It's a labor intensive piece. Now, what is it then?
Option, option one, option two gets us clarity for the organization, priorities for the organization, direction for the organization on a faster timeline. That's the urgency that, that the chair spoke about. And option one then creates a strategic planning program, has extensive community involvement. And that does all. And that does all take time and resources.
So you're not saying that option three doesn't do option one. In fact, you're saying that it does both of them. Okay, I'm sorry, I might just I was I wasn't sure what parts of option one might be removed.
But but part of.
Neither.
Part of what you've helped me realize is option one. There's two ways option one can be interpreted. Option one is. Getting the consultant on board. But does is this last sentence and would be expected to be completed by the end of twenty twenty four mean the entire?
Strategic.
Strategic planning process.
Correct. Okay. Almost two years.
That was faster than I expected.
Two years.
I honestly. I I. Love you for that, but I am s- I'm still skeptical that until you get a consultant on board. So I think it's option one is completing that robust community engagement. Strategic plan with robust community engagement, but the. With a target completion of end of twenty twenty four. But until you have the the. Consultant on board and a a solid draft work plan that we adopt. I don't, I'm still skeptical about the end date. Sorry, I gave my opinion there.
I think that's fair skepticism, because we're also, it's not just the board, we're also working with ACRE too. As a committee. And so there's that, there's just a reality of time.
The other, the other question I have is while I understand that it's eligible for ARPA funding. I I'm, I would like to raise the question of what type of community feedback will we get? When we expend that money under ARPA? And I'm I'm just raising. I'm I'm raising the issue. I'd I'd raise the same issue if we're talking about fixing the roof, you know, just so that we're we're clear about. What we wait, what we expect here. And I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just saying I want to anticipate. And the, I'm gonna take it a step further and say, the reason I'm asking the question is I get asked and I know each one of you get asked repeatedly. Can you provide ARPA fundings for my particular need? And so we hear that all the time. And I just want to be prepared with an answer. I think we absolutely need to move forward. I'm all in favor of option three. Say that right now. And I'd put the target date as the end of twenty four as well. I just want that piece. I just want to be aware what our answers are there.
You know how I've been leaning into that question?
How?
And, you know, whether it's a roof or or the strategic plan is part of ARPA. Is about resilient communities. And if we as a county government are not resilient for the twenty first century problems. That we have just experienced with the result of a first ever, first in recent time global pandemic. Let alone what's gonna transpire in twenty four, twenty five, twenty nine, thirty, forty.
So the answer is we need to be taking care of our own house as we're helping others take care of their homes.
Yes.
Okay, that that helps me.
Just on that point, we take care of our our house in service.
To others. Thank you.
And the and this is the commune, Washington County's community strategic.
Yes. And I I I just wanted some help in.
Yep.
Because I think I think we're gonna get asked the question.
Well, I know this this discussion is helping me a lot. What do what are your other thoughts, Commissioner Willie M. Fai?
Yeah, I think I I had the same. I think what you presented. Rock solid. I think it was very succinct, well put together. It was easy to read and follow. And I don't see any problem for me not to support the option you're recommending, the staff is recommending. I did have a question about the ARPA piece and we haven't approved as a board. I we haven't gotten a presentation about the the how do we gonna spend the art, you know, that trench two or three? Is it trench two?
Trench two, yep.
Yeah. So I don't know if we're getting ahead of this game here, because. If we haven't approved it yet now today, we're giving you a thumbs up. Just two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that money. But we haven't gotten a board presentation. So that was my, some of the questions I had in my head. Because we do get a lot of community concerns and people worried about like, how are the county gonna spend? This trench money? So and what I've been saying to that community is we haven't had a board discussion and we haven't had a board. Sort of approval. Don't get ahead the board yet. Wait and don't. It it was my way of calming the community to say, the board hasn't made a decision yet. And our county administrator hasn't put a plan forward yet that we've seen as a county board. So how would you handle that if we give you the majority thumbs up on this?
So we're not asking for a budget action or a budget supplemental today on this or the ARPA. So I would suggest if you're comfortable with recommending an option today as far as how we're moving forward. And then we come back with the funding mechanism for your board.
Option one included two hundred and fifty thousand dollar and it said it was a ARPA.
It says it's eligible. It's not saying that it will be, it will be ARPA, because that's part of the ARPA framework. And but and clearly your board's direction.
Yeah, so I think if we could put a note, like if I misunderstood that way and I'm asking these questions, imagine what our community is thinking. So I think the message I got is from that inter- the way I interpreted was. Option one, which is really good, because what you listed is solid and we need to do that option. But then the piece about the funding, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar that's being called out and then where that money is gonna come from, ARPA. So I I interpret that that was what the thumbs up. So maybe we can put out a somehow.
So as you do a rev of this memo.
Yeah.
Okay, pull out strategic planning is eligible, ARPA eligible expense. Out of that sentence and position it as you intend it to be. You're answering the question for us in advance. You were being proactive. It's eligible. But that's not a decision. And it's it's also important for all of us to understand there's a difference between direction and decision.
Thank you. It was provided for information only and we'll, we'd be happy to take it out.
I think that was good problem solving, Chair.
Commissioner Willie, thoughts?
Yeah. Probably a little heresy here, but what do you expect to get from a broad? Community engagement on a strategic plan? And the reason I ask that question is because we'll go out in the community and we say, hey, what do you think about our budget? And they go, I don't. They might have some ideas about the strategic plan, but that's why we're investing a good portion of this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And to me, it wasn't. I don't care where we get it. I mean, obviously, we've got to figure out something, but we have to first, as the chair said, we have to first make the decision. As to are we going to do this? Then the question always becomes, how do we fund it? That all aside. What do we expect to get when we go out into this community and talk about strategic plan?
Could I, could I?
No, you don't get the answer. You get these two get.
I want to ask this quickly. What did you expect to get as mayor when you went out and answered your community?
I didn't ask him about a strategic plan.
Well, you asked him about a community.
I asked him about budgets. I didn't care about that either.
You did, you did the Hillsborough visioning while you were mayor.
That's a little bit different. That's a little bit different because we were talking about the Hillsborough twenty twenty.
Yeah. That's a community strategic plan.
It was a stra- yeah, it was, but it talked about parks and it talked about all kinds of.
All municipal services of a city. But I think we're, so we've had one.
You're answering the questions for these two. I want to hear it from them.
Just say ditto.
Thank you for the question. We would be expecting to ask questions about outcomes that the community wants to see. What are the services that are most important? What are those long term goals for for the community? So so very similar to probably goal setting that you've done in other organizations.
Basically what they said?
Giving Terry bad time is that as executive director of Westside Economic Alliance, I participated in that plan and sat in that conference room. So I'm just saying I would expect.
I said in a few of those as well.
But I think, but also, I think. Through my experience as an outside elected official on that. That was more of a a known process, because the city had developed the. Longer term one and then was judicious about revisiting. And as far as I know, the county has not on a. Five, rolling five years gone and done that same level of reaffirmation and community engagement. That while you were mayor, the city did. So it's not that we're having to reinvent the wheel, but we're having to create a new foundation. Leveraging solid bricks from what we already have. In our county strategic plan, but also bringing in the most modern building materials. I'm using an analogy here. For a comprehensive county strategic plan to carry us into at least another decade.
We're following that.
And I do think there's an opportunity. We we already do quite a bit of outreach. So there is an opportunity to consolidate, to leverage what we already do. And and that'll be part, that should be part of the RFP so that it's not just another ask. It should be comprehensive.
I'm kind of go, I kind of go back to the dialogue that Roy and the chair were having to start this. What I was thinking the same thing Pam was that we're trying to solve the problem. We haven't identified the problem yet. And they were a couple of steps ahead and into the weeds. I'm stepping back saying, I don't even know what that looks like. So I like option two to start and then we do option one. So it is a blend of what you're asking. I just don't like them being staged on top of each.
No, you're. It is what you want. It is what you want, but it's more specific about getting that consultant on board. And then doing, see that big blue arrow? It's, it could actually be drawn of, instead of putting the big blue arrow here. It could, there could be a line down from that top graphic to a big blue here. Where it's leveraging the information from the top row, but it's really carrying forward.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a simpler question. How do you see this rolling out? If we do three. Who's on first?
On first, you mean?
What do we do first?
We get an RFP for a consultant so we can.
Yeah, I don't want to do that first.
No, it's in peril.
Because I don't think we as a commission know what this looks like. So we're going out and hiring somebody to do all of this wonderful community work and everything else when we don't even know ourself.
That's what the strategic plan looks like.
Now, if you said, we're gonna initiate the short term board project, we're gonna get started right on that. We're gonna hire this twenty thousand dollar person. To facilitate this and we're gonna bring this board together and get going. And then once we do that. Then we're ready to move into the RFP process because we know exactly what it is that we want.
We have to have an RFP for the person for the twenty thousand.
That's, that's.
Well, the twenty thousand is different and it's not the same person as the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. No, the twenty thousand is different.
I think maybe.
We're not on the same page.
Yeah. I, the graphic, they're not in direct parallel. So I foresee that. The. The initiating, the rolling, the option, let's, let's talk about options, the one and the two. Option two, we would get going on drafting an RFP and getting option two going as soon as possible. Within option one, the process of working through an RFP development with ACRE is gonna take a lot more time. So option one is in essence, from a timeline perspective, lagging behind option two. And then they would intersect.
The option two to me is. An internally developed program. They need a little bit of resource help to engage with us. Okay? Option one.
I get that.
Okay. This is where I have difficulty with this brown item here. Because all this does is it's hiring a consultant to come up with. To do the work for robust community, to do, put together a work plan for robust community engagement. And a robust work plan for the entire project. Okay? And so there's a huge big blue arrow. We need those, we need to adopt both of those elements after the consultant is on board. Had the opportunity of doing a bunch of of thought and come back to us and engage with us. Then we adopt those things and then we get on with the big blue arrow. The top row is helping us deal with the urgency. And it's different consultancy services. Because we're not going through robust community engagement. We're only picking up, harvesting the knowledge we already have. And making the most of it, including in our current proposed budget cycle and onward.
Correct.
I understand. I just, I don't agree with the description that you put in there. Mine is just a timing thing. I think we do option two. And we get, maybe we get end option two a ways and then we figure out what it is we're actually wanting this RFP to look like and what this consultant to do. And what we expect to get out of broad community engagement.
I, you know, I agree with you.
I'm just, I'm probably just arguing on the timing and an.
No, I agree with you. Timeline wise, looking at February and June. I feel good about the application of that timing for this blue part, for the first row.
Okay.
I don't feel good about the certainty of it here, because for example, we're engaging with ACRE. On how we go about this, right? For those historically underserved and really being successful at this community engagement. And we're finding it's taken a while, okay? And staff is also working really hard on this RFP at the same time that we're asking them to do the option two part. And all this other stuff on proposed budget and delivering services. Holy jamoly. I'm skeptical about. Applying June to this. Right? So I think your point is very well taken. It's on target. I agree with you.
Okay.
Could I ask another skeptical point? Let me, so I'm I'm skeptical about the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate. Not that I'm saying you've got my permission to spend more money. With. With the urban and rural reserves program. We, the Metro Council, put a million dollars of reserves into that program. It was. It was a multi-year robust community engagement program with consultant resources. Sound familiar? So your 250K is the estimate, but the consultant is going to leverage GFOA knowledge that you've introduced us to and others. And in order for us to get, we need to talk some more about what are those successful outcomes? We've had initial conversations, but once there's this consultant onboard, there may be things that you all haven't thought of, that we haven't thought of, that that new resource will acquaint us with and we go, darn, we are going to have to invest a little bit more. For example, with Urban and Rural Reserves, one of the things that City of Portland mentioned to us and Multnomah County, they said, well, you know, we found with efforts like this, we need to pay specific CBOs to go and enroll their community members to participate in this, right? It's much like, or it's similar to the stipends. And we didn't have, at that point, we had the estimated cost to spend out that full million and we had no more resources. So we on the Metro Council took the risk to say, we understand the value of that. We don't have the resources to do that and we're just going to have to make the most of it. Okay?
So you're suggesting we need more than 250,000?
I'm open to the possibility to revisit that. Right? The consultant's going to say, here's what you get for that.
And we don't know what we might need.
Yes. Right. That's all. I'm, I, as one member of five, I'm just saying, that's all. I appreciate.
Where I was going at the same time. How do we write an RFP when we on this board don't have clarity as to what the project is? What we expect the project to be. So how do we write an RFP?
Ah, and that's where I earlier articulated that we need the consultant to do some work, another brown triangle so that we have a work program for this, a work plan for this program. This is where I use the word program versus project. And that, an element of that is a robust community engagement plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think.
That we adopt those and then there's all that big work.
And we can add in a step to, once that work program is developed, we can add in a step to come back for approval on budget and the work program within all of that. So there are those touchpoints with the board. So I think what I'm hearing is agreement to move forward with option two, which is the initial plan. And then to, to begin to work on the RFP with ACRE on a, and refine the timeline, refine the budget, but take our time on that, knowing that it will take time to go through that process with ACRE and then come back, come back to the board. But really, we're, direction to move forward with option two, given the urgency.
I, I think it's more than that. I think we're comfortable with option three, but we want to see option three enhanced.
Okay.
Simplistically for me, take your brown boxes and slide it over one spot so that the engaged by the Aces, Acres to engage that one after the board has convened and has done their goal study. So all we're doing is sliding the brown scale over one box. And then I'm, I'm okay because then this commission is leading that discussion from a discussion we've had with ourselves. So we're all on the same.
Yeah, yeah. Awesome. I also need some more brown boxes.
We need some more brown boxes.
No, you can work with Tanya. Yes, I, I, you're, you're much more detailed in this whole process, thought process than I am, but I was trying to stay on the conceptual level. But anyway, that's, so I'm, I'm okay with three.
Yeah, I agree.
Get what I'm trying to do here.
Yeah.
Okay.
You okay?
I, I don't know why we have to have blue and brown. Can we discuss the colors? Yeah, we're. I'm silly. I am perfectly. One purple.
Oh, Roy.
I like your pink.
Purple and pink next time. Okay.
So just, this is really a policy ques, what is the next step the board would like to take? Because this is really a pretty big action step. It's linked to board goals, priorities. So would it be helpful if we make these revisions and bring it back to the board? So it's in a formal board meeting that you give final direction on? I, I'm just trying to get to like the next steps and so the community also sees that we are moving forward with a strategic planning process.
I, I, I'm in favor of bringing it to a board meeting and not on the consent agenda because of the messaging that it provides. So that, that's what, that's my preference. Okay? We've said we're going to do this and this is the outward demonstration that yes, we've done, we've done the backroom work. Here, here's the agreement upfront.
So we're actually going to take action to do what we're saying we're going to do here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm thinking about it message-wise. It's an initial program plan for development of a comprehensive community strategic plan with robust community engagement while also leveraging our internal knowledge and resources to address our current urgent needs.
And I believe that we would want to take this discussion to the ACRE meeting next Monday. Right? And the reason I'm saying that is I'd like to let them know that it's going to be on the board meeting. And, and maybe it's just an update.
May not be on the board for a couple more weeks, but yes.
But it's coming before their next week.
And ACRE's Monday.
It's on Monday.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm.
Happy to provide.
So what's that conversation going to look like?
It's just going to summarize our direction from today.
Because they know that one of their engagement pieces or what, a big piece is our strategic planning process.
It's just a five-minute, kind of just brief update. So we're keeping open communication. That's what I hear.
Exactly, exactly. And, and I've caught up with you that I think it is wise for us to take an action on that.
Yeah, I like it. Yeah. And you would do the presentation.
Any other thoughts? Really good discussion. Oh, sorry. Sorry to bring us back. I remembered at one point, and I don't know if I'm recalling a two-on-one, a board briefing or a, our GFOA previous roundtable. We had a memo there that documented, we had, the board had a conversation in like June of 2020 before you were Commissioner, Commissioner Phi, where we talked about what would be desired outcomes of a strategic planning process. And I think that's the one that Ref Calis talked about. And we had, I think it might've been that October meeting where you brought that information in. So we do have a little bit of, if, oh, it's, it's right there. Never mind. This is good information to include in that presentation. Thank you. Zip. Yes.
Good work.
We're all on the same page. Looks, sounds like a positive plan.
Great. Thank you.
I'm having trouble connecting all the dots.
There's a lot of dots.
Okay, we have one more topic. So let's keep going if that's A-OK. And my apologies for a, well, I don't need to apologize. Rather, I need to explain. Why do we have a topic that is a little out of the norm in terms of clarity? The reason is because we have a bunch of things in a state of flux. We have plans, we have a state legislature that is just going through its initial organizing for a new long session. And we have some state pieces. Remember, we had a work session on the semiconductor task force. And I was not, I have had a conversation with Aaron Doyle about, so how does this lay out timeframe-wise and the CHIPS Act and the Infrastructure Relief Act from Congress, right? And appropriations versus allocations? That's not the right word. But anyway, we needed to catch up with how things have been in flux and have the opportunity of bringing us up to speed and ensuring that staff has some, the value of conversation with us, not necessarily even direction, moving forward because things are going to start to accelerate real fast.
Is this, may I just ask a question here? Is this also our opportunity to talk about things that we've heard in the wind, so to speak?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Love gossip. What I thrive on.
Thank you, Terrington. Good afternoon, Board. Aaron Doyle, Senior Government Relations Manager. As the Chair stated, this kind of came out of a conversation of the fact that there is never enough time between work sessions when the state legislature is moving really quickly, potentially, to address an opportunity that the federal government has put forward in the CHIPS Act. So just to set some context, the CHIPS Act is directed at improving the semiconductor capacity of the United States across the board for, from, you know, development research all the way through manufacture so that we, if you listen to the news even today, we're way behind in a lot of places because we cannot get chips across from overseas. So having them built here just adds to the supply chain relief that they are going for. So through the CHIPS Act, like the bipartisan infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act, this was an explicit decision by the, the federal government to make investment in the United States and in the CHIPS Act in the semiconductor industry in particular, which one of the most known players in that, especially here in Washington County, is Intel. But they are not the only players as was presented by the Port of Portland. So the semiconductor industry and that advanced manufacturing capacity is really going to be central to a conversation that the state legislature is going to have because the CHIPS Act set aside what they're calling regional hubs. So these are opportunities for governments to go after some of the CHIPS Act funding to help their investments in creating the spaces for the semiconductor industry to grow within their communities. And the state of Oregon is going to go after one of those designations. And in order to do that, they have determined through their lobbying and working with the industry who was and with our federal partners and knowing that Senator Wyden and Senator Merkley have put together the task force to look at all of this. There are some steps that we have to show the federal government that says we're serious about our investments so that we should become one of these CHIPS regions, regional hubs. And so the semiconductor task force was created. That's what the Port of Portland presented those findings. There are some very explicit areas that they called out for either investment or enhancement or changes in the regulatory structure around. And in order to time all of this out to become eligible for the application, the applications are due early February. Let's just say the state legislature meets on a schedule that doesn't necessarily move at that pace normally. So the goal has been to create a set of policies that can say, we're serious, feds, invest in us and we will move forward on more things as we go, as we talk through our grant, our application with the Department of Commerce. And so the goal that has been stated is that in the first month of session, we will have some sort of package of bills that will move forward. And the first month of session is actually really short because we start on January 17th and we kind of need to get all, some of our ducks in a row right now. So what is happening is that there's conversations going on amongst industry, local government. We are now at that table participating as much as we can. And the education sector, workforce development boards, the governor's office, all of those folks are, are having these conversations about what does this package need to look like? What does it need to include? I'm not going to talk about all of it. I'm not going to give a ton of detail because as the Chair said, everything's in flux. We are still putting numbers behind it, but there are three key areas that I think this board cares about. One is the workforce and education portion. There is going to be a, a dollar amount that is robust, that's going towards all levels of workforce development. It's not just, you know, the universities, but the universities are part of it, but also hopefully down to the workforce development boards. Kind of capitalizing on some of the projects or programs that were part of the 2021, 23 biennial budget from the governor's office. The next area is incentives, and this is where our conversations related to SIP and gain share have been incredibly important for us. We are already starting those conversations with folks to talk about what we need as a county to continue to have that program work for us if there are to be future SIP conversations, but also to make sure that gain share has an extension that is meaningful and means that we will continue to benefit from that. We can talk more about details of gain share at a later date. There's actually in fact a work session on that next week. And then also included in those investments, however, are tax credits, which really don't impact Washington County. Those come from the state and enterprise zones. We as a county don't have those, but other cities use that tool as another property tax advantage. So we're talking about what's possible at the beginning of session, either just extending those or modifying them. That is still being worked out, but the comments you have made have fed into that conversation. And the final piece and one of the most challenging and I think a place where this board has not had an opportunity to have a conversation with me or with each other is around the industrial lands needs. The port did present on this. And they are still in the process of finalizing the report that's kind of looking at all of the potential sites that are out there. But what has been indicated by the federal government is that large lots just aren't possible in Oregon and therefore it seems really doubtful that we would be a good investment for a CHIPS hub. And we know that that's not accurate, but we have to address that image. And so the, the reason why there is this robust look at where it is possible to create large lots of industrial lands that are set aside is that we don't have, our land use system has really set up how we do these sorts of things and we don't set our industrial land standards to a particular type of industry or a lot size. As we look at what are our goals, what is the opportunities that are there? And let's, you know, size our land for the next 20 years as opposed to necessarily holding on to and preserving really large lots for a potential big investment. So what is happening right now is there is an ongoing conversation about the potential for supersiting, which is never a comfortable word for local government because that means we are not in control of that process. And it means that it is not necessarily our decision about where we can put the infrastructure or how we want to do the infrastructure that leads that supersiting conversation or that, that conversation when it comes to citing. So all of this is to say that there are ongoing negotiations to see if there is a way to not upend the land use system, but also perhaps temporarily or on a very restricted scale, come up with the ability to identify some potential large lots that are within the areas where the industry that is affected by CHIPS, the semiconductor industry can develop a large fabrication, advanced manufacturing, sort of look at having those lots available so that we can make them development-ready fairly quickly. So there's conversation about, and this is the part where Washington County is most implicated, cracking those rural reserves as part of the supersiting process, which doesn't necessarily sit well with everyone that's at that table. Therefore, the conversation is ongoing. So, but we don't. So, but we don't know exactly what that's going to look like. And I think one of the things that the legislature is turning to me and their, through me to you to ask is where is Washington County comfortable in that conversation? And, you know, from some of the conversations we've had, there are obviously needs to not make us the urban service provider to make sure that all utility providers and service providers, like Clean Water Services, our land use and transportation folks are consulted early, consulted often, and have the resources to provide things. But there is a bigger question around, are we overall, what helps us become more comfortable that the state isn't just going to leave us holding a bag of land that then either gets misused, can't be brought together to create one large parcel, is held by a developer who then cracks it back apart and doesn't reserve it for semiconductors? These are all the thought processes that are going on now. So part of the reason why the Chair and I thought it would be good for you to have this conversation, now that I've set you up for it, is to talk through where our levels of comforts are and what those boundaries and needs are. But the other question that I have for you is what further information do you need? Because I don't expect you to come up with answers today, because I've given you no more than this introduction. Because my plan is to come back, when we come back, the December, our, January now, the January 17th work session with the Government Relations Team to actually have a finalized kind of, this is the directions we want to provide you. So with all of that, I'm happy to answer questions, but then leave it to you to have your conversation about what you need as a board.
I, I just have a clarifying question, and that is, would you give me more information around what happens in supersiting? Who does lead the conversation? How, how does that go? Because I'm not sure, I, I don't think I can answer that.
It depends upon how we write the legislation. But usually what happens is the state legislature grants someone with the authority to say, this land is now designated as.
I'm having trouble understanding who that someone.
That would be part of, sometimes they've put it to an agency. My likely guess in this instance, which is just rumor mongering at this point, is probably it would sit with the governor to do this, and they would be, you know, so the governor would be the one that would be making these decisions on behalf of the state. But it basically, it's supersiting because it supersedes our authorities.
Yeah, and I understand that part, state has that authority. But I'm just trying to think about.
Yeah, so.
If we were in that situation, what, you know, who would we be beholden to?
Yeah, and it would be the state in some.
And I recognize it's not the situation we want to be in, by the way, so I get that.
So to summarize, Erin is looking for a little bit more input, leveraging our prior conversation that we had, and I can't remember what month, around the, with the Port of Portland reps and the semiconductor task force topic. Knowing what we know now, trying to get a little bit more feedback about what the board might be comfortable with. And it's just, it's a discussion, it's not direction, it's not a decision. Also, she's asking what further information might each one of us, as five, but also as the sixth, as a work group, might benefit from? Being mindful that the topic is coming back up in January 17th. If I could just start some, the art conversation, I have two things. One is, we have a governor, and we have a governor-elect. The governor is sworn in on what date? The governor-elect is sworn in on what date?
January 19th.
January 19th, thank you. I remember what today is.
Okay, so I assume that there will be a rock solid handoff from the current governor to the governor-elect for all of this. So, so that we've got at least some level of fluctuating consistency. So thank you for the answer to that question. Then the other thing that I want to mention, and this is for the purposes of getting something off my chest that might be related. And my memory of the experience may be a little bit, it's been years, so I doubt my own memory often. But this is around the urban reserve in the Sherwood area, around Edie Road and Roy Rogers Road, and which is in your district. When the Core Four and leading into Core Four, Tom Bryan and I were meeting with the various cities of District Three and forcing them to make some hard choices. They couldn't have everything in order for us as Core Four members to do our job, to take recommendations to our four bodies. We had expected, and the Metro Council had expected, that that area would be targeted for industrial and commercial. And the Sherwood City Council, my memory of it, chose to go a slightly different route and has gone through community planning with more neighborhoods than, than industrial and urban commercial. And my, so I just needed to express that. I don't know if you heard Commissioner Rogers say, that's true, because it's a big flat area. That sure, every piece of large area has challenges with transportation, infrastructure, and sewer and water. So I just needed to express that, much like we were talking about how, yes, Intel is a large semiconductor manufacturer in Washington County, but they're not the only one, right? Analog Devices is expanding, we've got, it's not Matrix, Out and Forest Grove. I can't remember, it's over near Ripple. And then Lam Research, which is expanding outside of Tuolton into Sherwood. So those are just three that whenever I hear semiconductor manufacturing, I go right to those three. So those are just, that's just some context I wanted to offer as the discussion starts. So back to the questions. What's your comfort level as we've been hearing about the state of affairs? Oh, I should, I'll, I'll start that. My patience is running a little thin in terms, I've asked previously, going back toward December 13th, our staff provided information. It's my understanding that our staff provided information to this semiconductor task force. And it was mentioned in the Friday fax of December 9th. I asked that we be presented, provided with the benefit of that on Tuesday, December 13th. And here we sit, January 5th. I've not received anything, you've not received anything.
And you're referring to what the staff provided to?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. I want a staff the benefit of that in a timely fashion. Staff is doing their job. But don't forget about us. I feel forgotten, which is a very uncomfortable place for me to be.
So what was the communication?
I'm checking on that right now, so sorry if that felt forgotten.
It's kind of good to know what they said on our behalf, wasn't it?
I, I, just to clarify what that meeting was, and again, I did take a vacation, so a lot of things just flushed out of my brain. But in, in, in just, there were two meetings of a subcommittee of technical folks that met to have conversations and analysis of the lands that were up for consideration. I don't know what our input was, I was not at that meeting, it was LUT and/or Matt, and I think that they've been trying to organize their notes, is where we're at on that conversation, to make sure that you do have the information, but I do think the holidays did interfere with some of the responsiveness there.
Friday, December 9th, Friday fax. Thank you. So how, in what way are you comfortable? In what way do you want to see this continue to be explored? And what further information might you need?
Well, I've had a lot of conversations with others, city of Hillsborough, and then, of course, there are people that have been in this game for quite some time, since we had the grand land bargain, what was that, 2015? And conceptually, I think if we don't do something like this, we send a pretty negative message to our existing private sector investors in Washington County and all around the region. So I think we have to do this. I, I'm also, I really liked what we had done back in the defining the 50-year urban growth boundary. I mean, you talk about a million dollars that you put out there from Metro. Catherine, I would imagine many jurisdictions spent well over a million dollars individually and then corporately coming together. So it was a huge task. I thought we came to a pretty good conclusion, only to have that tossed out from me on a, something reasonably minor, but that's just me. So I think we need to kind of go back to that, and the land that was removed from the reserves, from urban reserves, specifically right out here on Jackson School Road and that around, is a legislative process. So I understand, I think we're going to have to get into the supersiting part of it, just because they took that out of Metro's hands when they did that.
Can, if, if I can do what I tend to do, to go down details below that.
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Is when the, when the state in 2017 enabled the urban and rural reserves program, the, the legislation and the rules were adopted by the state that said the decision would not go to Luba, it would be subject to the Court of Appeals. So as the state moves forward with legislation that allows for the state, potential state supersiting, I think what we're suggesting is that they learn from that. There is a floor there that we don't want to see this tied up in subsequent actions tied up in Luba. But also they should think about what about Court of Appeals and Supreme Court. And of course, it'll have to be constitutional, and that's why legislative council works on all of that. And I, I'm declaring I'm not certifiably smart enough to know what all that is, but rather I'm encouraging them to look at that experience so that we don't end up as a state jumping through all these hoops, even potentially earning chip sack dollars and only have it sit stale and repeat the time between the 2015 decision and the LCDC affirmation process, and then all the appeals that took us through to 20, I think it was 2019, because I was chair. So, long time.
Like, that, I don't know if you got a direction from me, but I'm, I'd be supportive of us taking a, taking a fairly aggressive position, encouraging that.
You're saying to be, you're saying to be a hub?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, interesting.
Can I ask you a little bit more about that and those conversations? And I'm not debating your, your position of, yes, as you put it, we have to do this. I'm thinking about, once again, the details below that and the enabling. I've learned through our work with CWS of how important water, not just the ingoing water, but the outgoing water from the semiconductor process. So I assume there will be a significant investment that needs to be made, not just in education, and some of this we did talk about in that work session. But I think it's impactful, it's not just about a workforce, right? It's not just about building new factories, but you got to have the underlying infrastructure for such factories to perform. Which also gets me one.
Natural resources, which are.
Part, part, and part of that is a natural resource base. Water. Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, of course, sorry. Once I think natural resources, I think about air and forest. Which brings me back to air, though. Particulate matter, NOx, it's the NOx side of things. Part of what enabled further expansion by both PGE and Intel was the region's work on, remember the CMAC funds? And our work on, on airshed, particularly on the transportation side, so that we were protecting more airshed that high to be used for manufacturing. So there's something there that, there's a base, my gut sense is there's a base that needs to happen there, a base element that I'm not doing a good job of articulating, but that needs to be cost coverage there.
We were in, the county was in jeopardy of exceeding a, a, a level, right?
Yeah, we had made all that investment, which allowed that growth, and yet there were, the DEQ monitors were showing that we had a problem, which is why there was the wood stove. That's now run its course, and so there's this vulnerability that I don't want to go unaddressed or, or such that we have to just come up with a solution by ourselves without state and DEQ resources.
I think, I think what you're saying in a larger context is what did we learn from, from growing that, that, that sector? And how would we look to the future if we, if, if we move into further growth of that sector? And what are the, you know, what, what are the learnings? I think that's really the, and I don't know that it's just limited to the things that you've talked about.
Okay, I have a, I do have a significant concern as well, but I really, I've been saying a lot here, and I would like to reserve the right to speak last in terms of our conversation and raise that later. So if, if Commissioners Treese, Fai, and Rogers, if you wouldn't mind weighing in on these useful conversations that, or these useful questions that Erin is asking us.
Yeah, I, I can, there's hands. Relax, Pam and Roy, I'll go next, I'll go first. Erin, thank you for this information. It's, it's a really a complex issue, and, and I think it's a lot of conversation, a lot of people are having, especially in the elected official circles. And I think what will be helpful for us, or for me, I should, I should say, and I think will be really helpful for the board, is if we can have sort of like a letter in terms of criteria of what we, as a board, can live with in terms of this subject. If we have that criteria, then I think we can navigate around these conversations, because I think it's, it's just a lot going on. And I, one of the conversation, I was reflecting back, and I don't know how it fits in, so please also share as much information as you can, and, you know, just feel free to toss everything on our mailbox, because I really like to catch up and, because I, I participate. Toss everything on our mailbox because I really like to catch up and because I I participated the. The manufacturing tour. And I was really impressed with how it was organized and the the sort of the energy and the enthusiasm behind. What just happened with this chip act. So. And for us to be an active member in these conversations, I think a lot information, whatever information you could share and. For me, I would don't feel. Don't feel shy to and don't worry about bombarding my inbox. The other thing I was wondering, and I don't know how it fits in, probably the information you share will clarify this for me is that. When I was running, some of the. Community members that I met with and were around. You know, going back to this urban reserve rural reserve designations that some group of people that wanted to come to the other side. They couldn't. There's some legislation conversation happening, not going forward and. And then there's Multnomah, not Multnomah County, but Washington County and some similar thing happening in Clackamas County. So I wasn't able to track. I. I don't know how it fits in and I know I have a meeting coming up with one of the groups that. Met with me when I was running about that particular issue and I imagine it's tied. With this chip.
What issue? I don't. I still don't understand.
If I if I understand you correctly, you kind of need you need the urban rural reserves one oh one of how we ended up in Washington County with what we have. And what the process would potentially be related to any. Reform of urban and rural reserves and then how it ties back into this conversation.
Yeah, you did a very well synthesizing what I just said, but also there were a group of people who were pushing some. I think I'm looking at Roy Rogers, like. The county, the commission to get their designation. Switched to urban rural reserve.
Yeah, they're talking about. Yeah, yeah. That's taken out of urban reserve.
Vander Zandt.
Yeah, Tom.
I don't want to put it in any. So I.
Why? They've gone to the legislature each cycle, the last three cycles. So.
Those groups, like, how did this all tie in? And those efforts. So those are what I was wondering. That's the issues.
Yeah, I think it's. Once there's a better sense of what the lands that are being considered for potential. Designation related to the semiconductor as a potential large lot, that particular property will probably look like something on a map that's under discussion. Overall, the urban rural reserves is a longer background memo that I will work with LUT to make sure that you have that. Background information and then I will make sure that then it ties back to what this conversation is about because. At the end of the day, in Washington County. Any redesignation of a reserve is only a legislative issue. We do not control that and it it is intent. Those reserves are intended for a fifty year lifespan. And so it is a big political question, and that's why the supersiting question in rural reserves becomes a very big political. Not.
K N O T.
Yes, thank you.
So to just take along with what Nafisa was saying, Senator Solman. Introduced the bill as mentioned, you know, already. What does that look like in comparison to what we're talking about?
I have not seen that particular LC. I also mentioned, I forgot to mention this. There is a joint committee that is going to be addressing semiconductor work. It is going to be co-chaired by Representative Janelle Bynum. From Clackamas County and Senator Jean Solman from Washington County. They will be the co-chairs of the joint committee. So I enjoy my evenings in Salem. But so I think that is a bill that she brings to the table year over year. I don't know how it ends up folded into this conversation because I think that. Merely redesignating that land is very different than a supersiting authority. So it would have to be part of the conversation. But it's out there. There's place holders. We also have independent gain share bills that aren't part of the task force, but extend the gain share out longer.
And I think we we need to be a little bit careful. One of these parties, Tom Vander Zandt, has been associated with two. Questions, two two area questions. One is the folks that the grand bargain property eliminated or changed from urban reserve to rural reserve. Commissioner Willie was intimating that area. It goes Jackson School Road out to Wyble Creek was that area. Okay. Then, and that's an area that Commissioner, excuse me, Senator Solman, then previously Rep. Solman had been. Coming back to each year. Then, but Mr. Vander Zandt had also been working with the Springville Road area. That Multnomah County had designated as Rural Reserve. Close to the northeastern section of your area that the Court of Appeals had also addressed.
Was that Tom Vander Zandt or MLG?
Well, Tom stopped. Working on that and MLG has carried it on as have some other parties.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm thinking this.
But the reason I covered that is because of history and different. Different people's experiences and memory with common common names. That's all. So. I have. I have quite a few thoughts on this, so they're not all. They're not all locked in stone or anything like that. So I I consider this a discussion. I consider it just an opportunity to share thoughts. You know, I, first of all, I think I think it's important for us to participate. As a a partner with the state and not miss a potential opportunity. That's one thing. And and when you look at the the opportunity for money from the feds for this. I just want to get that on the table. I think I think that that's important. That doesn't necessarily mean that the site has to be here. It, but it does mean that we would work with the state to find where the. Highest potential is. And I have a feeling that Washington County would be in the top, top three or possibly top two. So so. And I and I and I also believe that. It's our responsibility to look to contribute to the state's economy, to look to contribute to the. The the opportunity for good paying jobs, all the things that we talk about in relationship to economic development. Those are all. Pieces that I think are important. While that said. I also do not think that the county, us, county at large here. Should be encumbered in any way by those decisions. And when I when I say in any way, I mean. Primarily financially, that this cannot be our responsibility and and it has to be a. A equitable distribution of of. Opportunities after the after the fact, and I'm talking about gain share now. So and while I've had opportunities to have some conversations with several of you around the table. The one thing that sticks in my mind is the concept that the parameters under which SIP was developed previously can't. And shouldn't apply in this timeframe. We're talking about a whole new set of circumstances. So it should be a whole new set of negotiations. If, in fact, we get down that road and this is a site, but I do, I I will say to all of you here that. It's, I believe it's my responsibility to help further the economy of. Ourselves locally, regionally and statewide. So and I and I would say that that's the responsibility of any commissioner. In any in any county throughout the state. So those are those are my thoughts. That doesn't. But, like I said, it's important for me to make it perfectly clear that we need to protect ourselves in this process and we need to make sure. That any agreements, if it gets to that point. We are. We've learned from our previous lessons. So that's that's where I'm going to leave that.
Everybody's had some good comments and I certainly can't disagree with hardly any of them. Having been involved in all of those and. Looked at it from a standpoint of economic development. I I I think it was a good decision. We always looked at it from the standpoint. Kind of like a big mall, you get a key tenant in there and. That's the big tenant and then you have all the small business around it to grow and and prosper and and that's important. The worry we had, which I is just a worry in the back of my mind, is that Detroit had the same problem a long time ago. They had a lot automobile factories. And all of a sudden, it didn't seem to be so popular and they. They they've suffered through that. So we never wanted to be a one trick pony, as they say, didn't want to be.
One industry.
Yeah, one industry is a better way of saying it. Yeah. So that's that's a worry in the back of my mind. But my specific concern to these. One, and I said it the last time, we 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 need to have a really strong partner understands, you know, what we're doing, how we go about doing business. Complete, healthy. Areas and cities are more than just a few roads that come into. The plant. And so even if they were to say, we'll build the roads, you know, through some process. It, you know, complete areas of livability have parks. They have other kinds of facilities. Are necessary if you're going to have a livable community and. If it's gee, we're going to supersite. Okay, I mean, you can do what you want, but are you are you going to do it in such a fashion? That all you do is take a big piece of ground, throw in a few lanes of highway. And say, right, they're here now. You all attend to them. Well, if you're Hillsborough, and I can't speak for them, I know a little bit about them, but you know, Jerry would do a much better job. What's he gonna do with all of the new housing and kids that come in and the school's gonna benefit at all from that? If he's gonna have to provide parks, not he anymore, but through the city of Hillsborough, is there gonna be any funds for that? I already would mention clean water. I mean, these plants are are very intensive water use and they're very intensive. And cleanup facilities and they don't provide all of that onsite. So what does that mean to the general public who we represent? Just not. You know, them are all rates going to have to go up to 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 affect that. Are there going to be some? Funds from the state to do that, for about air containment. Remember when I was. Back in the old days, I served on JPAC with Nina and she came to me and said, Roy, it's not just that you're gonna violate the principle. We're gonna send you a letter of non. Non containment. You're gonna you're you're not gonna build anything out there anymore. Do you understand how serious this is? And I said, let's go talk. Immediately the board took action. She came to me about two meetings later and said, wow, you guys are terrific. You really paid attention. So where where does all that go? I bottom line, I I I think the state needs to be a partner and understand communities or something other than just. Pieces of land or people. And they livability and prosperity goes far out from an immediate decision of, you know, ninety people down there. We might make a decision in two thousand twenty three. Who aren't going to be there in forty years when some other group of people are going to be dealing with problems locally. So that's why we want to gain share. We said we had to have something to attend to some of these community needs. So I have all for gain share. We'd step, you know, super nice. Like that too. And and I get back, I guess, right where Jerry was at the beginning. I mean, I I think it's healthy and I, that's what Pam spoke to too, that it's healthy for the community. But we can't, and you said it best, we really did. We can't give away the farm. Just because we're proud to create jobs, only to have that cost is our whole livability. And we can't do that. If if that's what it's about. Forget it. Let's say we respectfully like you, but go locate somewhere else and we'll give away their complete communities. For their. Chance to have some, you know, a few more jobs. So. I like the idea. I'd love to work as a partner with the state. I would love them to come in and understand and. Equip us with enough revenue to be sustainable after the initial plant was up. So is it sustainable? We look at that here. Isn't sustainability is everything? So that's my thoughts.
And we've we've talked about the concept of. For so long, the concept of being the economic engine of Oregon was like something good. The reality is that it's a burden. In so many different ways, and I think that that's the other piece. You know, we're we're our own worst enemies to some to some degree here. But I and I do think of that, the fact that. We need to make sure that others know that, yes, we might be, but you're benefiting and we're paying a lot of the cost here.
Well, if I could jump in on that because. First of all, the chip's money is designed to offset. A lot of this cost of this development. Secondly, is the city of Hillsborough would probably annex. All of that. If it's going to be developed, they're going to be developing it. That's why we have. That's why we have SIP agreements. We can talk about. A significant modification of the SIP agreement, but the fact of the matter is that. Again, the feds are going to hold us accountable for. And and the only way we're going to be attractive to. This development is to have something like a SIP agreement in place and we start talking about redoing the entire SIP agreement. We. We're causing a lot of consternation because I don't, I'm not sure we could get that through. Now, I'm not saying that we don't need to do some tweaks to the current SIP agreement, but when we start talking about throwing the baby out with the bathwater. And starting over again, that's a significant issue. That's.
I don't think that's what she was saying, but I understand your concern. And thank you for the clarification because I'm not sure I understood all of the, you know, all of the pieces that you brought forward. So.
Well, yeah.
And I'm just, again, my concern is let's learn from our lessons. That's that's what I'm.
I think we're going to have to partner up with the city of Hillsborough, quite frankly, in this conversation because this isn't just about us. I mean, it's it's certainly. In our county. But fact of the matter is, City of Hillsborough is the one that's going to be. Probably taking the lead on a lot of this stuff just because. Well. It it should be in a municipal service environment. So.
Okay, so for time.
Yep.
I'd like to have the opportunity in this discussion to contribute.
Go right ahead.
My items. So here comes the big one that I alluded to at the beginning. There is no free land. For the semiconductor industry to expand anywhere in Washington County. It would be impacting negatively impacting foundational farmland. That is a healthy and robust industry. So it does play one industry off another. And I say that. To recognize the situation, the facts literally on the ground. And that means that the state legislature is going to need to own their responsibility of engagement. We've been around this block once where the state legislature made action. People were not heard. Hence Rep. Solman, now Senator Solman's efforts. And. Metro and the county were left. To deal with the circumstance. So eyes wide open going into it. I think learning from the past, the state legislature is going to need to understand. That the reality. The next big thing I have is. There need to be more gets. Right? To use the phrase gives and gets. There need to be more gets in order for. The county government of Washington County, the city governments of Washington County, whichever one. It is not a foregone conclusion. It's Hillsborough. Proximate to Hillsborough. It could be proximate to other flat areas in Washington County. Or proximate to Washington County. What happens if it's the Langdon Farms area? Which the Molidas brothers have been pushing since two thousand and six, if not earlier. And that. Clackamas County's. Board is going to have an opinion on it. Marion County is going to have an opinion on it. I was the lucky recipient of multiple Sam Brentano. Thoughts on this during urban and rural reserves. thoughts on this during urban and rural reserves. That board has changed over as well. So the landscape's a little bit different than it was way back when. Uh, so in that vein of need more gets, we know that I five is congested. We know, of course, two seventeen and Highway twenty-six and the four oh five tunnel is congested as well. So let me offer up another gets. The state needs to commit funds for Southwest Corridor. Because we already know that the city of Tigard has been building out the Tigard Triangle with the result that Southwest Corridor has been adopted into the RTP, but it is not funded. At some point, there is going to be a stop development hold by the state. It's going to hit the city of Tigard hard because having it in an adopted document is necessary, but not sufficient. So no matter where this gets cited, near Hillsborough, proximate to Hillsborough. I don't, I agree with you that if it is proximate to Hillsborough, Hillsborough is well positioned to annex it and provide some of the servicing. But if it isn't Hillsborough, it's some other community. And we know that there will be support services in the ecosystem. There will be new residents. There will be travel for education. That impacts the I five corridor. Hence Southwest Corridor funding. Commissioner Trees was reminding us of our discussion around gain share and SIP. I think there are existing parameters of the existing SIP program that are there to build on. But I was very outspoken at that work session that I will not vote for an SIP program with those nineteen ninety-three or nineteen ninety-five caps of a hundred million. And, and, um, so forth.
Two million community development and all that kind of stuff. I get that.
Those have to be modernized. I think, I think at a detail level, that's what we're getting at. I think, um, at the concept level.
I refer to those as tweaks, even though they're significant dollars, but there's
Okay, yeah. We're, we're
Yep.
We're learning one another's vocabulary. That will continue to evolve. The other thing in the I don't know that I will be able to get to a yes, okay? But another, an ultimate yes. Getting the cities to a yes. Right? No matter what city it is and, and school district. Right? There's, there's that responsibility, that burden that goes along with it. And we, ev- every government conversation that I've been in in the last six months is, has been, there's been consistency. We are having difficulties, right? Measure five was, oh, uh, a decision from nineteen ninety with the property tax caps and local governments across the border struggling. And we need help. Hence the the livability aspect and how do we make sure we haven't just given up the ghost? So
I was thinking measure five trade out would be interesting.
Yeah.
That constitutional question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, it's complicated. So, um, I don't know where the thousand friends will be on, in this whole process and the farmland. And one of their primary tools is litigation. I don't know where the environmental side will be. We've touched on water. We've touched on air. And I still have some from urban and rural reserves, I feel healed, but there's still some scar tissue there. And it's itching a little bit under the fabric of the semiconductor task force.
You and I have similar scars, just different, I think.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep. So where is the Board of County Commissioners comfortable? Hmm. Boy, do we get it's complicated. Uh, I think this conversation has given you a little bit more insight as to some of our points of discomfort and some of our unknowns. What further information might we need? Uh, we I have heard expressed a commitment from the group to be a good partner with the state. What seems less clear through this discussion is how the state will be a good partner to the county and whatever cities are impacted. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, and I have a question, and this is directed at Erin and maybe others have the answer here. First of all, I don't know where, uh, our new governor is going to be in relationship to, to, to this opportunity. Uh, we knew where our former governor was, but I don't know that we, any of us know. The other, the other question I have is it, we're looking as though, and I think I said that we're one of the top three counties or top two counties. Am I accurate in that assumption? And I assume that those opportunities are metro-related versus somewhere else in the state. And so this brings to mind, Catherine, the, the discussions that we have at AOC. Yeah. And the fact that, you know, this is we're in a position to, again, carry a burden for the state economy that I don't think is, uh, understood throughout the state. So, so anyway, I'm just gonna leave that there too.
So I will just address a couple of it, a, a little bit of it. Um, I think because the governor-elect is in transition, she is going over these things. She's becoming educated. She's having conversations with the former governor's office, with all of the other in large table, as the chair mentioned, it's not just industry and local government. There's environmental factors, there's land, um, the farm community, all of, like, all of that is still being processed, I think, by her, her team. It is, um, she has stated a desire to be a partner in all of this. But hasn't put parameters on where that sits for her and that will be part of the overall conversation in the next couple of weeks.
Um, one of the indicators of that is her attention to Business Oregon. So I'm just putting that out there too.
Yeah, so, and, and then as far as, yes, obviously the metro region is a place where it feels very natural for something this big, but I think what is really important to think about in this, this overall picture is while much of the work is focused on taking advantage of the opportunity of the CHIPS Act and setting Oregon up for success in that, this can go beyond the semiconductor industry to advanced manufacturing, which has statewide implications. And that's where if we create tools that function beyond one industry, um, but create sideboards for advantages we do give to this industry that are saying when we're doing something really big like supersiting and it's very specific to the CHIPS Act, that it's tied very tightly to that. But the rest of the programmatic changes, which might have benefit to advanced manufacturing, does not rely on the proximity to the metro region, which has been, um, you know, bandied back and forth. But I would also say that the metro region expands because, you know, you go a little bit further south on I five and if congestion is relieved through a Southwest Corridor investment perhaps, um, you know, there's opportunities for development of, you know, pieces of this industry. There are other pieces of this industry like our land technologies, um, and all the other medium or smaller developers that are in other parts of the state that can take advantage of one investment here. So there are ways to think about this as a statewide investment, which means we shouldn't be ho- holding the bag for the rest of the state to paraphrase differently. And so when we have these conversations with our fellow, fellow counties, it's not just about one county seeking a windfall. It's that we lift a boat and other boats can be lifted with it and we have to ensure that the program's set up to account for that.
And maybe that's the issue for me is, is that I don't think that we're the county looking for the windfall. And that's, and that's the perception on the side of the other counties is that we, we get a windfall and it's like, yeah, well, you do it.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Willie's ready for it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that other counties perceive that it's a windfall to us, but in fact
Yeah, got it. It's not a windfall.
Oh, yeah.
Burden.
That's my point.
Uh, could I checkpoint for a second? If I heard you correctly, I went to scenario thinking. So Salem area has lots of flat ground. Could go to Salem area. Right? Then there's Corvallis area. There's Eugene, Springfield, Plain County area. And the reason that I mentioned these is because I think about no matter what advanced manufacturing it is, there's the education tie-in, the research tie-in, and I can't get away from water. Even if we wanted to expand food manufacturing here, we still have a need for clean water in water treatment coming out.
The supply chain to
Hang on, let me finish.
Excuse me, it's important.
And the, um, product, you produce product. One reason why it comes to our, my thinking comes to our region is because truck it out, fly it out. Right? The airport. Portland Airport specifically. So, um, I hope the legislature and this task force is really looking at the infrastructure. I don't, you know, you've mentioned the Port of Portland. Well, so does that mean it's going to be proximate to this area? Or is the Port of Portland just articulating what are those fundamental building blocks that are needed, no matter where in the state it is?
Um, I would say that there is a statewide conversation that's happening, but there is a pragmatism to the robust infrastructure that the Port of Portland provides in this region. But I think where this conversation has been focused kind of on the land and the impacts that are potential in Washington County, like the education portion, they're talking to OSU and U of O. Um, but also, um, Oregon Technical, you know, like there's other universities in Oregon that can see investments in programs to help build um, that advanced workforce, but also the workforce development boards that provide other types. And then, um, you know, one of the things that we're looking at, um, in partnership with, um, the city of Hillsborough through Echo Northwest is when you have that anchor store at the mall, how does that help all the other surrounding businesses? And what grows organically from that? What are the secondary, tertiary? It's not just the people whose supply chain, but also the people that support the people that live in the community, because as I think all of you have stated, it has to be a community-centered, it has to be a livability-centered approach. And so that's one of the big takeaways that I've taken from this. Um, that's really helpful. And then, um, you know, Commissioner Fai, you kind of asked for a letter that outlines where our priorities, needs, demands are. I don't know that I can do that quite yet, but I think that we're, you know, able to have a more clearer conversation, um, prepped for the seventeenth.
And I don't know that I'm ready to sign on something as concretely as that, just as one of five.
Yeah, and I, we also need a little more details to come out of the process and that's, that's the challenging part.
Chair, I have a quick question for Erin. Erin, uh, is there any infrastructure demands from Hillsborough that's out public?
I, I, we, I think that part of what the land use task, or land use subcommittee to the task force has been looking at is what it realistically is going to cost to create shovel-ready properties. And that is just the infrastructure to and from that site, not the complete picture of what it takes to build a community. Those numbers aren't final yet with the report not being ready. But as soon as we have it, we can start. No, not just the transportation, it's infrastructure, it's water, it's, um, wastewater, um, stormwater, transportation, um, electricity, apparently you need that to run a manufacturing plant, things like that. There, there are many utilities that have to be considered and being able to provide that level of service is not simple for any of us.
So I'll also close in saying I'm a little bit frustrated by, uh, the holidays coming in and all of this because as the AOC Oregon Trails uh, email of December, end of December highlighted, they had a really nice summary of all the interim subcommittees that also had information on this. I have not taken the action to go to OLS and watch the videos or try and wade through what information might have been provided in writing. Um, if the state and this task force really want to partner with us, they need to have information available for us to all understand. I've heard reference to, yes, I read the first report back from August. And I've heard that there's going to be a secondary report. But not only am I waiting and wanting for this, but the interim information, I don't have the benefit from. So I'm not playing with a full deck of information or a full suite of information. And I find that frustrating.
I have to say that I don't think anybody has the full suite of information because everybody's flying low on this, realizing we've got a deadline that's right in front of us and there's a lot of work to be done. And certainly, uh, uh, evaluations, I mean, yeah, this is a big deal. This is a, this is a big deal for our state, but it also has the potential, I believe, to be a big deal for Washington County.
Oh, I think we're all agreed on that. Yeah.
We have to make sure we don't stub our tail on this.
Yeah, Erin, well, if you could make a prediction, would you say the, the governor-elect might choose Business Oregon or Oregon in business industries? I thought the Port of Portland was a clear choice in all of this, or to just be the convener.
Um, I mean, the convener has been a combination of PGE, the Senator Wyden and the governor's office. But there is no, unlike many other places, there is no like repository of information. There's no, uh, designated website that would be in charge of this. But, um, I did make this note about having this type of information. There is a group of people, they have general technological knowledge and I think we could perhaps create, have someone be in charge of creating a, a, a central portal of information that I can continuously point to.
We just went through a global pandemic where, I'll just speak for myself, from what I think we experienced in two thousand twenty. People were thirsting for information. And we were willing to bring forward what we understood. And we became a trusted communicator. For bringing in federal information, state information, local information. And, and I think got a lot of credit for that and we worked really hard at that. I don't want us to have to be that focal point. That is beyond what we should be doing. We should be a partner.
Yeah.
At best.
I, what I meant by that is turning to, back to the task force and say, hey, guys.
Yep, we need that.
We need to meet, we need to think.
Yeah.
We need to be transparent and easy.
Thank you. I understand. Okay. Thank you very much for being brave enough to bring a flex topic forward and to get our thoughts.
I just, I also want to say again, I really appreciate the discussion level here and the fact hearing from all of us is really important to me.
This was, this was pretty cool. So I'm, I'm glad that you did.
Yeah, thank you. We're all brave together. We all succeed together, I think. Um, and we are committed to doing good work together. So. Alrighty. Is there anything else we need to touch on before we adjourn? Anything that's come up?
Uh, no, board members, I will just say on a personal note, I need to go home and take care of childcare. So I know Rachel's in the office. If board members need anything, um, however, I'm of course available, all the other means.
We're in good hands, as always. Great, great. Okay, well, thank you very much for productive roundtable.
Yeah, this is really good.
Bit over our three o'clock target.
Um, good topic.
You can get where you need to go. Good job. Thanks, everybody.